By the way.
You know, the bullets and...
Yeah.
That was awesome. The fact that she pumped it out so quick, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
I didn't even have time to read it because she...
I mean, it's all...
I mean, I wasn't planning on them being available today.
There we go. Well, she knew it was needed probably for tonight.
Letha.
Yeah, tell her.
She started us.
Everyone all set? I'll call the Lenardere Planning Board meeting to order for January 11th, 2012. For everyone's information, if we need to leave, evacuate in case of emergency. This room has two exits. They're on the front and the back of the room, on the right-hand side of the audience. We do need to evacuate. Actually, go through the exit closest to you. Go outside, move away from the building, don't come back into our fire first. I've instructed everyone to do so. If that's where you're at, please rise and we'll pledge allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We have a quorum. Let's see, John, who's an ex officio, is not here. I haven't heard anything from Mary.
Mary's here.
She's in the school board next door.
Okay, okay, she's at school board. So I'll appoint Scott to vote for Mary until she returns to the meeting. So we have eight voting members. And John, as an ex officio, there's no feeling for that. Let's see, get that done. Our meeting's divided into two parts. First part, administrative board work, what we got, is just done. The second part of the meeting, this being the second Wednesday of the month that we have continued plans, conceptual discussions, and public hearings, there are none. So, yeah, but we do have one thing with other business, so that'll go after administrative board work. So we'll proceed to administrative board work. The first thing we have is the Planning Board will discuss the subcommittee review of proposals and the selection of consultant teams to interview for third-party planning and engineering review services per RSA 676:4B for the proposed Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development. Master plan is part of the quality-based selection process. We have Andre start. I know I got an email from Letha, and Letha, Mary, Scott, and Rick were the four-person subcommittee. They have done a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time because there was so much to read. I know it took me a while to get through all that, but you had to give it much closer scrutiny, so I thank you all very much for the work that you've done. So, Andre.
I guess I'll start off.
Or you can work with Letha back and forth. What are the easiest?
That's fine. Go ahead, start.
Oh, no, no, good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I think I went over to the last meeting that we had advertised for the RFP supplemental after our December 14th meeting. Based on that advertisement, we received 10 proposals. And I think the charter for the subcommittee was to review those 10 proposals and come back to this board with a recommendation today. At last night's subcommittee meeting, we did just that. And I believe we also reviewed at the November 4th meeting, mid-November, yeah, January 4th meeting, the methodology by which we would come to a conclusion with regard to the consultants. And that chart is displayed behind you, Mr. Chairman. And with that being said, I'll hand it over to Letha just to go over how we came up with our selection.
Okay, well, as I mentioned last evening, each subcommittee member was asked to rate as they were going through each proposal on a scorecard in various categories and awaited approach. Essentially, the scores were inputted, and the subcommittee members, after we discussed each proposal last evening in great detail, had the opportunity at the break to adjust any other scores if they saw fit. Staff also, we asked that they create scores as well for the proposals. And we decided that we felt a combined score would be appropriate. However, we asked that staff scores be... represent 20% of the overall scores, so that most of the weight of scoring would be by the residents, or in this case, the subcommittee members who are residents of the town. Collectively, we agreed on a ranking system with the highest scores yielding the top ranks. Let's see, if you want to go through each one, I don't know if you can see the board up here, but in the combined rankings, the first-place finisher with the highest score proposal was Howard Stein Hudson Associates. Next was Resource Systems Group Incorporated. Then Hawk Planning Resources LLC, followed by Shook Kelly. That was, if you recall, a candidate from North Carolina. All the others were represented from through the states of Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Number five, Stantec Consulting, followed closely by Divine Millimet and Branch Attorneys at Law. Niche Engineering following them. Fugier Planning and Development. Then Brown Walker Planners Incorporated. And last but not least, Provan and Lorber Incorporated. Essentially, I would say that we got 10 decent proposals. Naturally, there were some we liked more than others, but I felt that we got a nice representation across 10 proposals, and I feel comfortable that despite the quick turnaround in getting, you know, advertising and getting in RFP responses, I felt, and I believe I can speak for the subcommittee, when I say that I felt we had a good representative group of proposals to look at and to make some considerations on. And, let's see, the top four, we decided as a group last night that, after some discussion, that we'd like to recommend to the Planning Board to invite four of those groups that you see highlighted there into interview with us next Tuesday with your approval. Those being, as I had mentioned before, in rank order one through four, Howard Stein Hudson Associates, Resource Systems Group, Hawk Planning Resources, and Shook Kelly. We felt that all four of those candidates offered a variety of experience, qualified professionals. Some were very strong experience in multi-unit type developments, mixed-use developments. We felt that they seemed to have strong team leads as well, and that overall, we felt that they got it, what we were looking to achieve with regard to a third-party review. So.
Yeah, that's good. Because I know toward your bottom rankings, I think those are the ones that didn't really have experience with, you know, I think with groups and also with large amounts. They might have done maybe 10 acres or 20 acres or something.
Yeah, and they had experience in a variety of things. I mean, clearly, they're all very reputable, as I'm sure you acknowledge as well, but the experience that would assist us in this particular project, yes, you're correct, we had them more on the bottom of the line, some of those, just because we were looking for something very specific.
Anything else, Andre?
No, I think Letha put it very well. I thought we got 10 sound proposals. I just think some were stronger than the others, and I think the four that we're inviting in are going to be well... are well-versed in what we're looking at achieving in the review that we're looking to have done for this project.
Let's just go ahead, Cynthia, and then I'll get the board.
I just wanted to say that I feel a lot of pride in the effort that all of the committee members took to spend the time to do not just read the proposals, but to thoughtfully consider the pros and the cons. And you could tell that in the discussions that we had last evening. And the fact that there really was pretty much consensus even through the crossing over into the staff's sort of favorites versus not favorites. There wasn't anything that was really inconsistent, and so I feel like, you know, everybody worked hard, and I think the end result is going to be really good.
We had some comment from the public as well. We had two representatives from the public last night. One in particular also, this plays a dual role, representing the public as well as commenting on behalf of the applicant as well, and we got some great feedback from him on each of the proposals as well. So that was real nice to hear your comments as well. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. And Mrs. Aronson, I know you're not here this evening, but we appreciate you coming down last night to listen and to evaluate and to consider things with us.
I mean, that's a little more unusual to, you know, solicit input from the public that way. Usually, I mean, really as defined in, you know, statute RSA 91A. You know, the meetings are for the board, committee, and so forth. It's public. Public can attend and everything, but there's no public input. And it's up to the board or committee, whatever, to, if they want input. Except for a public hearing, that's when you do get public input. Otherwise, the meetings are basically, you know, with the board or committee or whatever, and then the public just watches. So I commend you for that. I know I tend to be very lenient on meetings. I've cheered if anyone's got a question. I don't always hit all the hands, or sometimes people put up a hand, and then you look again as it's down in an SIG, kind of really see something up here. But I've been accused of going over backwards on things like that. It makes meetings too long. But then you get the input. Board? Any comments or questions?
Really amazing piece of work to have been done in so quick a time, and I was quite amazed that all the minutes were put together so quickly.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Made a little enjoyable reading this afternoon to go through there. But, yeah, it was very comprehensive. One question I have is if we're going to have these four coming in, I was trying to find the proposals. I thought they were submitted also electronic format. Are those available for us to look at? Because I'm, you know, I didn't have the time. That's why I didn't volunteer to be on the subcommittee to look to all those proposals, but I think it would really behoove us to look through those four before this week.
I thought they... all of them were on the website.
Yeah, all of them are on our website, yeah.
Okay, maybe you could send me the link to it, because I was trolling around, couldn't find it earlier today.
Whenareyou.org?
Is there any... Did I just read that up there?
I was trolling around before, too.
All said, I was...
Yeah, all said.
I think we just want to review it online, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the only... maybe it's just me, but Resource Systems, the very first thing is they're involved in a Market Basket-related project. Since our developer is part and parcel of Market Basket, isn't that a little bit of a conflict of interest?
Well, I did bring that up last night. So is it in the minutes? I'm sorry, I haven't actually seen the minutes. Okay. No, that's okay.
Yes, it is in the minutes.
That was one of the things that I noted as an observation and that, you know, but I didn't let it, at least I can speak for myself, and then, you know, the subcommittee members shook their heads, I guess, and whatever, but I did note that in last night's discussion, that I had observed that. I tried, you know, not in any way to allow that to influence me either way, but I felt we had strong enough comments about some of their background and some of the team that they were bringing in and the related experience as well, that we felt strongly that they would be good candidate to hear from in an interview.
I am not...
Just a minute.
Not saying that, you know, it should knock them out of coming in for an interview, but I personally have concerns about that.
Excuse me, my recollection now, too, is that they were retained by the town of Seabrook to review the...
To review Market Basket.
Yeah, so it wasn't like they were working for Market Basket. They were doing similar to what Stantec does for the town.
Okay, that sheds it in a little different light, but, I mean, just looking at the minute notes, you know, that's not brought out.
Got you.
But I think we have to take it...
Having gone through the proposal, I recall that.
Okay.
That was our comment.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, could you come down to the microphone and name and address, please? That's all the people listening at home can hear.
Yeah, I'm at Dirk Groton Heist.
Yeah, could you sit?
Sure.
Need to be like within a foot of the microphone for it to pick up.
Dirk Groton Heist with Resource Systems Group in Three-Power Farm Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire is my home address. I just want to respond to the comment about the Market Basket, and it's correct. Resource Systems Group worked on behalf of the town of Seabrook to review the proponents' application for Market Baskets, and there's two Market Baskets there. So we acted on behalf of the town for those services. So we would not have felt that that was a conflict of interest, otherwise we would have indicated it. We have not worked for, directly for Market Basket.
Thank you.
Judging by the minutes, I think the subcommittee did their homework, and I think they did an excellent job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, too, for coming out and putting that out in person. That was good of you to come. Also, I was just interested to see that when you look at the separate... the ranking by the Planning Board Subcommittee and the ranking by the staff, even though the staff didn't go in exactly the same order, they were ultimately ranked in the same order, even though the staffs had some interspersed between, you know, there was a... they didn't mix up the order when it came to who, you know, when you ran down the rankings, if you know what I mean. Anyway, thank you for doing all that work. It was very easy to read the report and understand what you had gone through yesterday.
Anything else, Letha?
No.
Maria?
No, it's all been said.
Okay, Scott?
No, I'm just pleased with the outcome. I think we had four good applicants, and I'm anxious to hear what they have to say next Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it is a fantastic job. I mean, it took me several days to read through some of it. I hope my boss is not listening, well, she doesn't live here, anyway. Cheating a little bit, you know, like breaks at work and so forth, or, you know, instead of reading scientific-type stuff, I read some of this. So I could do two or three at a time, and I had you just go do something else, but there's a lot there, and the kind of, I guess, my overall feelings is reflected on the rankings that you have there. I thought there were three that definitely just weren't qualified at all, so...
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need to make a motion?
I don't think it goes... if we publicize and everything, that our next step is to do the interviews on the four.
So the full committee accepts the recommendation of the subcommittee?
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll take a motion. We'll get it, we'll make it really official.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the team's recommendation that we call in Hawk Planning Resources, Howard Stein Hudson Associates, Resource Systems Group Incorporated, and Shook Kelly for formal interviews with the Planning Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the board? Seeing that all of them are in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sensations? Chair was affirmative? Motion carries. The next step. Look, this is a step at a time. We're being very thorough and very methodical, and that's the way we want to do it, so...
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clear up or clarify, the motion was interviews with the Planning Board, but I'm understanding it's really going to be again with the subcommittee.
Do you mean the subcommittee, Dana, your motion?
I thought the next step was to call them in for a formal interview with the Planning Board.
No.
No.
Full board, no, it's a subcommittee.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we'd be sitting here doing a interview and...
It's a six-hour process.
Yeah, yeah.
You can be here Tuesday, you're invited.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Three o'clock.
But that would be a fifth member, which constitutes a meeting, a statute.
Well, hell, we had that many in the boarding booth yesterday.
That's probably true. That's a chance encounter. Okay. Since we have no continued plans, we'll move to other business, and we have the impact fee discussion. And I believe this is in reference to Litchfield Road, Andre, which we had discussed last night, or is this more encompassing?
More of our overview of...
Okay, so why don't you let us know, so...
Although at the end, that's another question I have for the board as to how we want to proceed with that. But Cynthia, if you can go to the first slide, I believe I covered a little bit of this at our November meeting.
Okay, so this is just like a report on what you've found so far from the complaints that we have received, general complaints.
And based on not only the complaints, but also in looking at our impact fee program and looking at what needs to be done in the future to get it clear and run it as efficiently as we should. But just to bring the board back, back in 1994, Daniel Tell meeting, Article 110, the board approved, the town approved, impact fee program, which included fire, police, school, library, recreation, and traffic. And the traffic on the next slide...
Can I ask you a quick question before we go on?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Did we receive any other complaints other than from attorneys Michaels and Pansio Co.? Or are those the only complaints we received?
The only complaints we received, you know. And as I mentioned, when we were discussing Mrs. Pansio Co.'s appeal to the Planning Board, some of the stuff contained in her letter, I mean, obviously, Dave, Karen, and myself, as well as finance, looking into the things that, you know, if there's issues with regard to the way the London area's impact fee is being administered, we're looking into that, and obviously, we're going to come back to the town council and the Planning Board with our recommendations of how we can put that back on track. With regard to the traffic, as you know, there was some feedback that we received from our legal counsel with regard to traffic impact fees and their recommendation on how we can better align our traffic impact fees with the state statute. And although it must be said, we've had other legal councils at the onset of the master... onset of the impact fee formula, and their recommendation were ones that we went, I think London area went forward with it. I think it preceded a lot of the people on the board right now, but I believe that the town proceeded with the recommendation from legal counsel at that point in time, which included segments of the state-owned roadway, because that's the way the legal counsel at the time saw it. Legal counsel now sees it in a different way, therefore, we're going to be making amendments to our program accordingly. And that is to review the corridors that we have, the Route 102 corridor, as well as the Route 28 corridor, and basically remove those roadway segments that are within that impact fee formula, keeping the intersections identified in that program intact. And then recalculate the impact fee formula accordingly. Move forward, advance that to the next slide.
Were there any questions, just to jump in?
And this is more of a question for the Planning Board. Historically, the board has reviewed the fire, school, and recreation, library impact fee on a four- to five-year interval, and I believe there was a review done in the late 90s, and there was a review done in 2002, done, another review done in 2006, 2007, and now it's coming on that interval time that I think we ought to take a look at that. But I just want to look at the fire, the school, fire, police, recreation, and library. And when I say take a look at, I mean, you know, we'll bring our consultant in if the board agrees, consultant in to take a look at, the consultant might come back and say, you know what, your school, your fire, and police are fine, we need some work with regard to recreation, library, or something of that sort, and proceed with the analysis based on that. But I would definitely recommend that we move forward to at least an analysis of our impact fee. I think we're due. And I hope you agree with that.
I would say it needs to be done periodically, anyway. I mean, just like we do a master plan, we do it periodically. Because conditions change, I think we've got to, you know, stay close to where we are.
Right.
About five years is probably, I think, within five years, anyway, should be reviewed.
And the next slide. I think the last slide is the last one, yeah. So timeline for the staff will come back with some recommendations for the Route 28 corridor in February, follow closely in March for the Route 102 corridor. Want to work as best as we can with regard to that, so we, again, we want to make sure that our program is solid and we can move forward with it. And if there's any questions that we can address with the amendments that we're proposing, then obviously, we'll address those. And then the review of the other impact fees, depending on how we proceed, if, you know, we get our consultant on board and look at the other school, other impact fees such as school, fire, police, whatever, obviously, those things will be done, and a timeline will be established for those as well, and I'll bring those back to the board for consideration. And before questions, the last thing, again, back in November, we had discussed the Litchfield Road Route 128 corridor impact fee, and the question that I brought to the board was whether or not we wanted to continue with that impact fee program. Again, that was established back when the Victory Baptist Church was being reviewed by the board, and I believe my predecessor, Peter Lowitt, and the Planning Board and staff had taken a look at the impact that would, that particular project would generate for the intersection proximity to it, which was the Litchfield 128 intersection. So had done the study to look at the impact and what would be needed based on the impact, not only for the Victory Baptist Church, but also contributing parcels within the rational nexus of this intersection, and establish the, I guess, an agreed-upon impact fee for the improvement of that intersection. So the board did establish one, the program, back in 1997, and we have been collecting impact fees since that time. The town had put in its capital improvements program, as well as appropriated its share of the funds. Matter of fact, it appropriated more than its share of its funds with the garden for the impact, for the improvements for this intersection, but it was also matched with a state grant as well that was written and received for the benefit of this, the improvement of the intersection. If you drive through there now, you'll see turning lanes been added and a signal's been added to that intersection. But the question now remains that now that the improvement is done, and knowing that the town paid more than its share of the improvements, actually, it paid a portion of the private share for that, but improvement, does the board want to keep that, keep that impact fee in place until such time where the private share is paid for, or we want to look at, or make the recommendation to town council that this is done and do away with the impact fee?
Is there going to be any more, or do you see any more impacts in that area on what it, you know, in case something else goes there that would have an impact upon that intersection and roadway?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, they... Yes, the, the contributing, the contributing lots within that area, you know, there are some, you know, there are some significant projects that could, could arrive in there. One of which we've heard of, off of Stonehenge Road, there was a proposal for, I believe, an over two hundred unit affordable housing development over there.
Affordable housing, then it, then it was, then it became workforce housing.
Workforce housing, yeah. And so, and so that has the potential and there's several lots in there that could be redeveloped that would have an impact on this intersection. So yes, the answer to your question is yes, there, there could be.
Laura?
What, you say that just part of the private portion hasn't been paid yet, correct?
Correct.
What are, what are we talking about, what percentage is left over and what kind of, what kind of money are we talking about?
Based on the, the numbers that, you know, the actual cost of the improvement, which was two million ninety four dollars, ninety four thousand dollars, the town's share was one point eight of that, which it paid. One point three million dollars of the, of the improvement was paid through a grant. And the town appropriated six hundred and forty one thousand fifty nine dollars towards its one third share of that grant, which represented two hundred and thirty six thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars of the private share that it took in that amount of, of its share, I should say. So out of the six hundred and forty one thousand dollars, it paid two hundred and thirty six thousand of the private share of that.
And the total private share was how much?
Actually, the total private share, it was two hundred and ninety three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
So the town paid almost all of that?
Correct.
I, I didn't take careful enough care of the numbers in my head, so there's a couple tens of thousands left over?
Correct.
So we could wrap, this could be wrapped up within the next, there could just be a couple parcels or either a, a small number of parcels could yet go in and then that will be taken care of, right?
Well, actually, I'd say when you say tenth of a thousand, I guess the, the amount that, the delta between what the town has shared, town has paid and the private share is two hundred and thirty six thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. That will need to be collected for the private sector to have paid its share of the project.
So two hundred and ninety something, two hundred and ninety, okay.
Two hundred and thirty six thousand.
So would the excess town money go back to the town at some point?
Correct, you say, you say that again?
Yeah, because I mean, the town has paid more.
Yeah.
Than its share. Would those excess money go back, like in the general fund?
It, it would go back to offset the town's share of its, of the costs it paid for the developer, basically.
I didn't mean that, or?
That's okay, I was just trying to get that straight, so there's an amount left for the private, that is, the private shares outstanding?
Correct.
And then there is amount, an amount that the private share kind of owes the town of London Derry?
Correct.
So that would be over and above the two hundred and ninety something thousand?
No.
Oh, two hundred and thirty to two hundred and ninety, so there's.
Yeah, so, so that two hundred and thirty six thousand is that private share that is yet to be repaid.
And then sixty thousand on top, top of that? I'm sorry, you're totally, I, I, now I'm getting lost again, two hundred, I'm, I'm really sorry, but I want to make sure, well, okay, let's just say that there's, I, I guess I don't know why we wouldn't have, why we wouldn't keep that impact fee in effect until the private share was paid for and the town was reimbursed for what they fronted for the private sector, for the private share.
Correct, and that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
It's, it's just that, do we want to do that, do you want to keep that in there? Because the question came up is that, from the private community say, well, the development is, is already done, therefore, why don't you shut it off? I say, well.
Because you owe us.
Because there's, it's outstanding balance and if the town says, you know, that's it, that's fine, then we shut it off. But if we don't, given that the town paid its share in the private sector, as calculated back in ninety seven, did not, then. That's the question.
Korea?
I have a quick question.
Okay, what we'll do is.
Do you want to go through the board?
We'll go, go through the board, I guess.
That's fine.
Anything Scott?
No.
Okay, Korea?
All right, my question was, I remember we had this discussion and one of the things that was thrown out was about the six year window of an impact fee. Are we beyond the six year window on that, I, I forget the year that this all started?
It started in ninety seven and, and within that six year period, we had, we had put that money in there, accumulated our money. And, and, and so we had done our due diligence with regard to.
Okay.
The project.
So I guess what I'm asking is now that we're in two thousand twelve, and if you did all that, aren't we, aren't we past the six years at this point? Or am I misunderstanding the way that works?
If we had money in there that were not used for the, for the purpose of which it was collected, yes. But we use the money for which it was collected.
And we're actually in a deficit?
That's right.
Oh, so that's what that rule applies to, it doesn't mean that after six years, your impact fee on that area is done?
You lose it, basically, yeah.
Oh, okay, so, okay, now I understand, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set, my question's.
Okay, I've heard some thoughts back, we'll, we'll come back.
Are there any administrative costs in keeping the impact fees going?
There, there are, but we can't take those out of the impact.
No, no, I'm just wondering, you know, how much it costs us to keep the impact fees in place versus what we're collecting. You know, if it costs more to administer the impact fees than we plan on collecting in the next X amount of years, it may make sense just to kill it, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know what that breakdown, I, I can't think it would be a whole lot, but I, I don't know that breakdown.
I'm probably in the minority, but I think we ought to just consider it done for several reasons. The church never did come up with the traffic that we counted on, that it was going to generate. In the time I've lived here, up until they put a light, signal light at the intersection, there was more traffic generated by the Catholic church up the road that affected that intersection than Victory Baptist has ever generated. With the opening of the bridge to the airport now, we're getting way more traffic at Litchfield and high range and that intersection. And with the improvements to that intersection, it doesn't just benefit that area, it benefits everybody in town that goes through that. And I really think that's something that we should start looking at, at our impact fees. Granted, yes, I understand what they're there for, they do serve a purpose. But we also ought to consider what the improvements are doing and how they affect the whole town versus just one particular area. If it's benefiting the whole town, you can't put the whole load on one small area.
I agree with Dana.
Rick? I'll counterpoint Dana's point, I believe that there was a public portion of that intersection that was paid for by the town and then there was a private portion of that. And that was ratioed out based upon the benefit to the town versus the impact on the area. We do have a substantial other properties up there that could get developed and I think you should leave the impact fee in place. I think at some point that, that we may need, you know, the money's been spent by the town, the, the intersection's been improved, but I really think the town should still collect that.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I, I, I wanted the point I want to make. Yeah, to Chris's point, there, there are, there are substantial areas that could be developed, I mean, even, even up by the airport to some degree. Now that Patengill Road project, once we get, you know, find, find homes for lots of great companies up there, will ultimately affect that intersection as well, including the intersection of, you know, Litchfield and High Range, Litchfield and Mammoth. And, and I'm curious though, I have a question for you Andre. The way we treat this, have we ever had a situation like this in town where we were waiting to collect the private funds and, and it, it sort of lags behind, I mean, was this a situation we've seen before and did we, you know, and if so, did we relieve them?
Town front money for Page Road improvement?
Yeah, we.
We still have impact fee there?
We still have it there, but now it's based off the, the, the expansion of that intersection as opposed to what it was, what, what took place there already.
Okay.
But do we have a situation like that? Yes, we do, and, and directly, the library, the town built the library and established an impact fee in order to pay the portion of that library that was associated with growth. So that is much, almost the same premise of which this would be. It's that the town funded the money and therefore it's saying, okay, there's an improvement that would be enjoyed by others within that rational nexus. Therefore, the impact fee is being kept in place until such time, that's, that's met.
Thank you.
You know, the bottom, but the impact fees are just on certain people that want to develop in that particular area. Where, as we're now finding out, there's other areas that are having a very dramatic effect on these intersections.
Correct.
So to put all of the burden for these intersections on one particular area when other areas beyond that are having an impact.
Yeah.
Is not right.
Well, we, we find that, we find that all around our town, is this, I know in nineteen ninety seven, when, and, and from my reading of the planning board minutes and, and the way this was constructed and what most of the impact fees, traffic impact fees were constructed back then is that it's, it was all based on a rational nexus. That means that the, the traffic in the Route one oh two area and, and the improvements that are made resulting for that Route one oh two area primarily benefits Route one oh two, even though somebody who lives on Litchfield Road coming through down Route twenty eight and goes to Route one oh two will benefit. And, and, and vice versa, those improvements that are made on Route twenty eight benefit everybody. But it's that rational nexus that we have to take into consideration, that we, we cannot charge somebody who comes, who lives in South London Derry, who may be developing in South London Derry, for that one trip that, that could eventually make their way to Route twenty eight and say, well, no, you're, you're getting caught. You know, it would be tough to make that argument.
I still disagree with that because you're with these impact fees and we keep talking about affordable housing and I keep hearing people say, well, our children can't afford to live here. All of these kinds of things roll into the cost of buying a piece of property in the town of London Derry.
No.
Okay, and those taxes go up and everybody else's taxes go up in town as the property values tend to go up. So the bottom line is, we can call them, we can put any name we want, it's a tax and it affects everybody.
And I don't, and I guess the argument regarding that, that premise, it can go on and, and ways, and I'm not here to wage that particular, is this that the, the town made a decision as to how we want to move forward with assessing impact fees and, and how those impact fees were going to offset some of the costs associated with the growth they were seeing resulting from the eighties and early nineties, whatever.
I agree with that a hundred percent Andre, but that was back in nineteen ninety seven. We're almost twenty years later, the demographics have changed, the town has changed. We need to take another look at that and consider how we're divvying everything up.
No, no disagreement there, that the town wants to take a wholesale evaluation of its impact fee program, that's fine. My, my charge in between then is to make sure that the impact fee system that we have now is working properly. That's, that's our marching orders right now and that's what we're attempting to do.
Because really our, our own ordinance dealing with has to follow enabling legislation, which is RSA six seventy four twenty one.
Correct.
And there's a lot of detail in there about, about impact fees that we have to follow. Prior to that legislation, we, we collected impact fees for traffic because it impacted a, an area. And that's based upon, there's a lot of case law, the impact fees prior to lead up to this legislation. And the whole thing is on, what I under, under say by a rational nexus, that's what the bulk of the case law revolves around. But once the town adopted impact fees, it didn't seem to slow down growth at all, it was still, you know, tremendous. The only thing that slowed down growth is the collapse of the housing market, which occurred late two thousand seven, you know, into two thousand eight and continues currently. I mean, that's almost changing the whole paradigm of, of housing in this, in this country, yes. Which is, you know, I think the impacts of what's happening, you, you look at it ten years from now, you say, boy, this is a tremendous change in how we, how we do things and how we look at things and what's, what's happening. Right now even. But the, I know with our growth management, there's a sunset clause and there isn't any regards with the impact fee. I'll have to go back and take a look at the, the state legislation on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but I think, I, I guess what I get from the board, the majority would rather continue with the Litchfield Road impact fee than, than not. If the board has a concern or something, I'll take, take a motion on it.
You want to take a vote?
Yeah, yeah, to take, take a vote on it.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Someone brought up Saint Jude and the, I, I'm a parishioner there and I know that they've been planning on building a, a new church there. And if, if that was something that could result in either getting impact, you know, an impact fee assessed to them or not, I, maybe I'm being over cautious, but I'm not sure, I'm very comfortable voting on something so close to something I've been dealing with and contributing to and that kind of thing.
Part of the short answer is, is yes, but I think there's, there's probably more, more to it, but yes, I would say it, it, it would. The church would have to pay its, its impact fee, but I don't know, I'd have to defer to Andre on something like, like that. To generate new.
I'm just not sure I had a vote on it.
You could abstain.
Yeah, you, yeah, that was the same, if you feel uncomfortable with that, you can abstain. I was just, after you take this vote, I also want to make the board aware of an email that I received from David Free from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission today as well.
Oh, okay.
I was just looking it up to make sure I don't lose sight of reporting it to the board.
Yeah, so I'll take a motion either to, you know, like disband the Litchfield Road impact fee or to continue with the Litchfield Road impact fee.
Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the impact fee.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second by Lynn, any discussion by the board, Tom?
Not so much to, to Litchfield one, but, because I mentioned the growth management ordinance. And I know one of the calculations in there is student population. Student enrollment.
Yes.
I guess. You know, and, and frankly, I get, I get a question that as a criteria in, in, in any of your calculations. I mean, you've got an inverse, you've had a decline of enrollment of almost eight, ten years. And you've had continuous growth in the school budget. It, it hasn't gone down. In the same time period, so, I mean, one just doesn't have any impact on the other.
I know the, the one calculation that I think you might be referring to, it really has to do with capacity. That if, if the amount of, you know, if we have an influx of residential development that in turn we use the capacity ratio that we use typically for a household.
But that's, that's my point, I mean, it doesn't have any relationship to, you know, capacity doesn't have anything to do with what we pay in taxes.
Right, it has the, and that's what the impact fee is based upon, is capacity because part of the infrastructure. And now, I mean, it doesn't really, isn't really factor into the growth management because it is a declining population with, we have excess capacity, I think it's like a thousand excess faces. So, I mean, we could, we could see considerable growth and the school has the capacity to, to deal with it.
So then there's no, then why is there any impact?
I think the only thing is paying off the bonds from.
You could stick a hundred kids in the school and, and there's no, there's no quantitative increase in cost.
And, and more likely that when we do an analysis for the joint growth management order, that's not going to come up is that, you know, we, we couldn't make that argument that the, even if we were to face a level of a growth, you know, say, you know, we grew by three percent, I don't think we can make a, a argument to say that, boy, that's having a detrimental impact on our school system.
That goes to my whole question about how do you, how do you calculate this thing? I mean, you could have a false alarm at, at, for the fire department. And they go out and drive to it and they find out it's a false alarm. And let's say it's, an alarm goes off by accident. Question should be, should we charge perhaps the, the residents of a business that? we charge perhaps the residents or the business that had that? But what's the cost? The firemen are getting paid whether they're in the station or going to the false alarm. So there's no marginal cost to the fire department, it's the gas. But I don't think that's the kind of, you know, cost we allocate it. I mean, for years we heard, oh, if we have, you know, if we stop building houses, you know, for open space, we're going to save $10,000 per kid. Well, we know that's a fallacy, it's never, it's never been the case. You can't take the average cost by taking, this is the school budget, it's 65 million, and divided by 5,000, and it's, oh, it's 15,000 per kid. But then when you have a decline in population or enrollment, you don't see anything, I mean, it's just, that's my question, is the, what's, are we really measuring the impact? Or are we just doing this as some way of justifying collecting a fee?
Well, the growth management ordinance is separate from the impact fee ordinance. The growth management ordinance, it was established to regulate the rate of development in town, and the impact fees is, was put together just to, for the, as a means for the private sector to pay its share, its contribution towards the capital facility that may be necessitated by growth.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, whatever your calculation is for the impact fee, I guess I have a real problem with the theoretical basis for saying, this is going to impact and cost this town X.
I understand, that, and when we examine, say, the school, if we were to examine the school impact fee again, and we bring in the expert that we have brought in in the past to help us with that, I mean, those are questions that I would, that I guess we would bring up and say, you know what, boy, is this the right methodology to assess the impact on schools, given the very premise that you're talking about.
There's a police impact fee, right?
Yep.
If we build a development with 100 houses in it, what's the impact on the police department? I mean, what do you measure it by? We've assigned some fixed cost to every 100 houses? What if nobody ever calls the police in the 100 lot subdivision?
My understanding of the impact fees, though, is tied to capital improvement plan.
Correct.
So it has to be.
CIP.
Yeah, it has to be a capital improvement that it's tied to, not to just a growth, but that we've decided.
No, but I understand, but you're just, frankly, you're arbitrarily assigning a cost or something, and then saying, oh, you've met this criteria, you know, you've built 17 houses, and we've put this arbitrary fixed cost of X for police, Y for fire, and schools.
I think what it does is averages across, so, you know, probably fixing, the real cost is not there, there's not the detail, it just kind of averages it over.
Well, I know part of the analysis, and I'm not going to put myself totally in Bruce Mayberry, our consultant's pen.
Bruce Mayberry question.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Is that, but I know what he looks at, he looks at what's happening in Londonderry, what our growth trend has been, what our permitting trend has been, and looks at what some of the capital expenditures we're going to be making, what's regard to our police department, our fire department, our school department. And then he makes some, you know, he'll make some, not only assumptions, but also some, verify some of those costs associated with that growth from the school department, from the fire department, and the police department, in order to determine what is a, you know, what is the right increment and the right impact.
But that's my point, that it has no correlation to what actual costs are. You've had essentially no need for capital improvement in the school district. You've got a declining school population, you're not building any buildings. You might be repairing something, but that's because the roof is now 20 years old, it has nothing to do with another development coming in.
But I know that the past impact fees were based on expenditures made for additions to school, so we have the last decade, we made two.
And when you built up, when you built up the infrastructure, then it made sense. Now that you don't have any more infrastructure to build, I don't see it. And the proof of that is, you've got downward enrollment, and you still have upward cost.
And then, and then those, and then that same discussion that we're having with regard to the Route 128, Litchfield Road intersection, is the same discussion we're going to have with school, is there a need to continue that, based on that?
Yeah, but what I mean, just, what's the definition of impact? It impacts something, and that's all I'm saying is, if we built a 100-acre development, there's no impact on police, fire, and schools. I mean, if a police car's going to patrol another, I mean, it's not going to cost anything more, the fire department isn't going to cost anything more. The school has excess capacity, but we charge an impact fee. And we have this, I guess, idea that, well, there's going to be some additional infrastructure that we're going to, we're not going to build anything. So now that we've reached the point of, you know, that you have, you know, a new fire station, a town hall, what's the impact?
Well, also, I mean, so when you, at the time when we started our impact fee system, which was back in 1994, obviously, there was perceived to be an impact, and then based on analysis on our consult at the time, there was, and therefore based an impact fee. And then subsequent revisions of that, that have been done, there also was determined to be an impact because we had.
I agree that those were justified.
So I'm saying now, we found ourselves over the last few years that, which just happens to be within the cycle of our update of this, of this system, to be that, boy, we have excess capacity in that thing. And therefore, my guess is that it's going to come out in the, it's going to come out in conclusions that maybe there might be some revisions involved, required for that impact fee, or it might even be a decision that the town would have to make, is that do we continue that? I don't know those answers because we haven't done the analysis.
Yeah, as in the statute, RSA 67121, Roman numeral five, as used in this section, impact fee means a fee or assessment imposed upon development, including subdivision, building construction, or the land use change, in order to help meet the needs occasioned by that development, but the construction or improvement of capital facilities owned or operated by the municipality, including is another, it's a fairly long paragraph. Subparagraph A is the amount of such fee shall be proportional, shall be a proportional share of municipal capital improvement costs, which is reasonably related to the capital needs created by the development and the benefits accruing to the development from the capital improvements financed by the fee. So, these are probably good Bruce Mayberry questions, the thing is, we have to, you know, as long as we follow what's here, and this is not exact by any means.
No, no, I know, but I mean, if you look, maybe five years ago, the last school improvement of major proportion was a $5 million bond to fix South School to get rid of the modules and, but that had nothing to do with more kids coming in, or new kids coming in. It had, it was just building that needed replacement, so.
Lisa?
Andre, is it safe to assume then in our timeline that if in February we're going to review Route 28, in March you're going to review Route 102, other fees are going to be reviewed? Is it safe to assume that you're going to come back to us, give us an explanation on each, a presentation or something?
Yeah, at least we'll.
And all of this will be discussed, and with maybe the help of Mr. Mayberry or whoever?
Yeah, once we, if we move forward with this, which it sounds like we want to, and when we get Bruce on board, and I use Bruce Mayberry because he's helped us from the beginning up to this point, so he has thorough knowledge of our impact fee system, is that, and the questions that, you know, Tom brings up, and as well as the other board members bring up, you know, yeah, we can have an opportunity to have some discussion with that, because it, frankly, it will be interesting with regard to the school impact fees, and the analysis that went into that, and even though we have declining enrollment, the town did move forward with additions to the school, the high school, built a new kindergarten school within this, you know, within this time period of last decade. Therefore, it'd be interesting to find out how declining enrollment has an impact on the actual infrastructure that was constructed.
Andre, so to Tom's points about the school impact fees and police impact fee, you're laying out February for Route 28, March for Route 102, you want to fix some dates here that, you know, that we're going to review those, that they're done, because I think you made a comment, that I think we do have a consensus that this should be redone, it's time for it to be done and re-reviewed.
Well, I can, if the board allows me to, as I move forward and secure the services and all that, that at least I have a chance to talk with our consultant and lay out a timeline as to, as we usually do with regard to a contract, as to when we get started, when can we expect some, you know, some results from that, from that. And also, I want to put in some time so we can have some good discussion with him with regard to some of the issues that you brought up, because I don't have all the answers with regard to that, but I am familiar enough with at least the process by which he uses in order to put them together, so I can make sure we integrate that into the discussion as well.
Yeah, and then I think it's his availability that we have to work on also. Anything else from the board? I have a motion on the floor, so, if you're ready to vote, Maria.
Would it make sense then to table this vote until after you figure out the restructuring of the impact fees, or?
I don't think, I don't, I don't think, because the other impact fees we're talking about are school, fire, police, and, you know, the ones other than traffic, so.
That's true, okay.
Okay, we'll proceed to vote. This is to continue the Litchfield Road impact fee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions, abstains? Dana is nay, chair votes affirmative, motion carries.
The other issue is that I received an email today from David Priest, the executive director from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission regarding a bill, bill number 291, relative to currently allow impact fees by municipalities, sponsors of Senator Booton, Senator DeBois, Senator DeLisandro, Senator Odell, Senator Roush, Representative Katusky, Representative Hess, Representative T. Smith, and Representative Grantham, which goes on to state, this bill establishes requirements for impact fees collected by municipalities for the construction of or improvements to state highways. And it proposed to add language, and I'll read that, new language, new paragraph, innovative land use control, RSA 674215, by inserting at the subparagraph J, the following new paragraph, impact fees imposed upon development and collected by municipalities for construction of or improvements to a state highway within the municipality shall be used only for improvement costs that are related to the capital needs created by the development. Such improvements may include items such as, but not limited to, traffic signals and signage, turning lanes, additional travel lanes, guardrails. No such improvements shall be constructed or installed without approval of the State Department of Transportation, and no event shall impact fees be used for any improvements to roads, bridges, or interchains that are part of the interstate highway system. And this is effective date on this actual, in fact, 60 days after passage. So I know we heard at the meeting with Ms. Pantiaco that this particular piece of legislation failed before, but obviously it's being reintroduced. How does the board want to react to this? I think Mr.
I think I'd have to read it in detail, I can't make any decision now. Maybe what you do is email out that bill to the board, and then our next meeting, we could get input.
I believe that there's going to be a hearing on this on January 26 of this year, in Room 103 of the Legislative Office Building at 9:00 AM.
And our next meeting, which is a special meeting, is the Thursday, the 19th.
Correct.
And maybe we could discuss that then.
I just want the board to be aware of.
Yeah, I know what Pantiaco brought up, I think there was two or three pieces of legislation, but I mean, they're only proposed legislation, who knows what's going to happen to them anyway, but definitely, because this is the time of year, you really got to follow what goes up on and conquered, because all of a sudden, you know, things could go, whoosh, you know, and just get passed, and so. But maybe, I'd say email that out to us.
We will, I will.
Yeah, and we can cogitate about it and discuss it at our next meeting. And then our next meeting is after the interviews of the third party candidates, is to make a, well, the plane board to make a selection. So, that's a week from tomorrow.
Yes.
Hearing for our fast timetable.
I have another related question, or a Woodnot question.
Okay, I'll do other business. Yeah.
You're ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
So my understanding was that Woodnot made a presentation to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission last week.
Okay, I'm not aware of it.
I'd seen some emails saying that something was going to be happening, and I don't know if it did or not, but I'm just wondering if we can get a hold of it.
It did not.
It did not happen?
The Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, obviously, the board made a determination of regional impact for this development, therefore the application was sent to Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And so they have requested a overview be presented by the applicant's representative as to what the project is, so the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission will have a better understanding of what it's going to be reviewing and so on and so forth. But the day before that meeting was going to take place, it was, I believe, a representative of the applicant called to cancel. It said, given the, that the board has not made a decision on the acceptance of the application, it would be premature for them to make that overview to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission at this time.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn, second by Lynn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, we adjourn.